Good morning, everybody. Let's go ahead and get started with the first council meeting of the first of the year. First, want to introduce and welcome Ben Carson to the team. We're excited to have you and get you right into our regular meeting. At this point, let's rise and for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Election of officers, Doug.
So I'd open the floor to nominations for the position of president.
I'll make a motion to nominate Jody Hamilton for president.
Second.
All right, so we've got nomination for Jody Hamilton for president. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will close the floor to nominations for president. And all those in favor of Jody as president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. I'll open the floor for the office of vice president.
I would like to nominate for vice president Kathy Vernon.
Second.
All right, nomination for Kathy Vernon. Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the floor to vice president. All those in favor of Councilwoman Vernon as vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. I'll turn it over to you, Madam President.
All right, thank you. Auditor's financial report.
Okay. So, taking a look at the general fund for 2025. We ended the 2024 year or beginning of 2025 with a cash balance in the general fund of To get to what you would consider as your unappropriated balance or available for appropriation, we add our projected miscellaneous revenue for this year, the property tax levy, take away circuit breaker credits, which is an estimate at this point. So we have total funds available of $85,943,546. We also subtract from that the budget and any encumbrances. And encumbrances are what invoices have come in right at the end of '24 that can be paid in '25 with '24 budget, so we carry that budget over. And then subtracting out what your approved minimum balance of $11 million is, gives us a beginning net balance for the year of $7,521,557. You have no general fund appropriation requests on this agenda. Now, yes, that sounds high. It's just over $2 million from what you had available in '24, and our cash balance grew by $2 million. So when I go down and look at the revenue, I didn't have anything particular to point out at the top or any of the individual line items, but just showing here that general fund revenue came in at 70 point, almost .2 million, and subtracting out the total expenditures of 68.1 gives you the $2 million difference. If we look at revenues, taking out that sale of the property that was deposited, then we are pretty much right on track, revenues versus expenses. And then also looking at our spend rate, we had estimated a spend rate for the general fund of about 95% of budget, and we came in at 94% of budget, so that contributed to the increase in the cash balance. Looking at fund balances, there is a fund 1159 that we created, which is the new health fund. That is per statute, something we had not had on the books, but we have added it. It's just not showing on your report because it's a zero balance. My intention with that is that we would move the amount of budget from '25 from the Health Department into this fund and have them spend their budget out of there. And that also during budget hearings, we would talk about how that fund should operate. The only other fund to point out is the self-insurance fund, Fund 4710, which I typically do highlight the balance there, and it's at 4.6 million the end of the year. We started '24 at 8.9 million. And that was all I had. I guess not, it's not all I had. Encumbrances, you had in your packet the list of the encumbrances. So at the top of the report, I was showing that we subtracted out 491,000. That corresponds to this number down here, gives you a list of all of the departments and invoices that they are carrying over. Biggest portion of that is auditor professional services, and that was for the financial system project implementation fees that you approved. We just started that project. And then other funds are listed that have encumbrances. For grants, we do typically carry over all of their budget, and those are not reflected yet. On the agenda, under consent agenda, I've added amended salary statements, and these are all of the salaries that were approved from the time you approved budgets through the end of the year, just to get on the record what the 2025 salaries are for those positions. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Yadira?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We ended the month of December with an account balance of $175,507,887.20 and an interest for December of $957,701.06. The average interest rate was 4.72%, and the weighted average rate was 4.73%. Between banks and investments, we brought in $9,037,750.80. With that, about 5.6 million went to the general fund, which is about 62% of total interest. We did hear from two wealth managers yesterday about how robust the economy was, and they were only pricing in about predicting one to two drops in the rate for this year. So interest is probably going to continue to be pretty good for us.
All right, thank you. All right, any public comment in regards to the agenda items? Moving forward, consent agenda. And just a reminder, Jennifer put the amended salary statements included in this.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Murray and a second from Councilman Basham. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Additional appropriations start off with Circuit Court Grant Fund 9631.
I make a motion to approve the appropriation for Circuit Court for the TAGS VISA Grant Funds 9631 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilwoman Dolam and a second from Councilman Richard. Any discussion?
Yeah, this is just the grant fund that he's been getting. I don't know that there's anything changed. Any questions?
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Prosecutor Fund 2507.
I make a motion to approve appropriation for Drug Enforcement Fund 2507 as presented.
Second.
All right, I got a motion from Councilwoman Dolam and a second from Councilman Richard. Any discussion?
So Pat said he couldn't be here, but I mean, this is just the normal funding that he uses for his cell phones and law enforcement expenses. I don't think there's anything different here as well.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Same thing Prosecutor Fund 2561.
I make a motion to approve appropriation for the user fee diversion fund 2561 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Dolam, second from Councilman Richard. Any discussion?
So I asked Pat about this one. He says it pays for their toxicologist, pharmacist, doctor, psychologist, and outside legal counsel when he needs help with his forfeiture cases.
Any other discussion, thoughts? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Second, or... Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you.
Make an appropriation for Title IV D Incentive Fund 8895 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Dolam, second from Councilman Richard.
And this is the same thing, IVD Incentive Fund paying the salaries, the grants like we've always been doing, the incentive fund like we've always been doing. It's just the beginning of the year.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Salary statement.
Okay, so this one is a salary statement. It's a new position that was approved by the Board of Commissioners. I make a motion to present the salary statement as, I make a motion to approve the salary statement as presented, sorry.
All right. Motion from Councilwoman Dolam, second from Councilman Richard. Any discussion?
So this was approved by the Board of Commissioners. It's, we're eliminating one and bringing in another position instead, the HTCU Digital Forensic Analyst, K-9 handler. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Any question, discussion?
Jennifer, is this the same salary? I believe it was a level lower because it took out the K-9 duties, is that correct, Stacey?
I believe so. I'm sorry, can you ask the question again?
I believe it was a level lower because it took out the K-9 duties.
Yes, just eliminated the K-9 duties. It's the same position, less K-9 duties. The person in the position is aware of the reclassification.
But it went down one level.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next up, public offender salary statement.
I make a motion to approve the salary statement for public offender as presented.
Second.
All right, motion from Councilwoman Dolam, second from Councilman Richard. Discussion?
Conversation about our salary statement because we had not put a full-time person on our salary statement from last year. We are currently okay. I don't see any reason why we need to go back and ask for that at this point. The other question she asked me is, could we do one position and not two? And my response to her was, I'm not opposed to not funding that second position if that is an issue. It is a CHINS position that I need to, I had taken when the CHINS cases slowed down, I used that CHINS person for criminal cases, right? So I need that part-time criminal case. So just to help you all understand, DCS is driven, the numbers from DCS are driven a lot by Indianapolis. I don't really have the temperature of what's going on, but Judge Graham has an excellent temperature of what's going on, so I usually talk, speak with her when I want to know where we're at. The numbers for 2024 in the CHINS appointment went up substantially, okay? Just so you understand. So what does that mean? Well, in a CHINS case, it's a, you start off with a CHINS. If the parents comply, their children are returned or they're not removed. If they don't comply, in 15 months, they file what's called a TPR, it's a termination of parental rights. If the parents comply with that, depending how much time they're going to give them, then they'll dismiss it, but if not, they go forward with a fact-finding. If the children, if the parents' rights are terminated, then you go on to an appeal, okay? That's the process. So when the CHINS numbers increase, it's very logical that the TPR numbers will increase and the appeals will increase, okay? So what I did, because the CHINS numbers had been low from COVID, and then they just slowly have, they kind of stayed low, but then they picked back up in '24, I've taken my CHINS appellate attorney because he wasn't having very many appeals, and I had him doing criminal appeals as well as my criminal attorney, because, I mean, we have them, we've got to use them, right? So what I anticipate is going to happen, and I don't know, and I really wanted to speak with Judge Graham, is because these numbers are higher, that the appeals are going to increase, so I'm going to have to take my CHINS appellate attorney and just put him on CHINS appeals, which, so the courts will pick up the extra appeals, because we ran out of numbers fourth quarter with both of them doing criminal. I mean, the number of appeals is pretty significant. But I'm okay with not funding it right now because our numbers are okay, but I don't want to eliminate it because I, my gut instinct, and I trust Judge Graham more than I trust myself with this, is that those numbers are going to go up, and then the TPR is going to go up, and we're going to need people. That's what I'm concerned about, and that's why I kind of said we need to go back to the CHINS. But certainly, if you want to just see how things go and not fund it, and we can see how it works, I'm okay with that, because currently, we're okay. So, you know, if you, we don't have to spend money if we don't need to, correct? But there's two ways it's going to happen. If those numbers go up, and I see it from a very much a break-even point, kind of a business analysis, and you may all see it differently, but if you have to pay hourly, and just let's take an example, let's just assume, and I don't have a correct number, okay, that the salary of a part-time person is $100,000, how you pay benefits and everything else, okay? Well, if you can pay hourly and you can keep it below that $100,000, why would you pay the $100,000, right? But if you start paying $200,000, and you could have paid $100,000, then you're saying, why am I paying so much money? So, and it's hard to tell you, when we get a case, we don't know whether those parents are going to comply. We don't know whether they're going to file a TPR. We don't know whether they're going to have an appeal, correct? So that's where I say, that's where I would, I would probably defer to Judge Graham on when she thinks we do or do not need that position, because she has, DCS is so controlled by Indianapolis and policy that, and she has a good read of what's going on with DCS. I meet with her about once a year, and one year, she said, Amy, the director changed, she's against removing kids from the house, DCS cases have declined, but then in '24, I spoke with her man, she said the cases are going up, and they are, you can see it in the numbers. So, I mean, I don't have the crystal ball for you, but just so you understand kind of the way I look at it, so it's up to you how you want to handle it.
So you're okay, obviously, if you kind of like just table this until later in the year, and if it's needed, you'll come back?
The one part-time position. The other part-time position I have to have. So I asked for two. I'm saying fund the one, keep the other one in my statement, so if we get to the point and we see that those numbers are going up, and you're going to be paying substantially more than if you hired somebody, I would say, then I can come back, and the position's there, we just need to find the funding. And I don't know if that's how you want to do it. I will do it however you want to do it. I mean, the county's going to pay for it one way or another if we run out of people. It's just how you want to do it.
I think we should do that, hire the one now that she needs, and then see when she needs the other one, and she'll come back to us?
Yeah, but just leave it there so I don't have to come back and ask for a new position. I'm just saying, leave it unfunded.
So how do we do that technically, legally? Is there anything I need to say, or?
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is a salary statement. So you're fixing the amount, you're not appropriating any money with this document. Is that accurate?
Correct. She doesn't have a budget to support two regular part-time, she has a budget to support one full-time.
Right.
So if at some point she would want to fill it, if she's not had any vacancies, she would need appropriation to come up with the difference in money.
Okay.
So right now, it's just asking for the position.
So I think you approve the two, the salary statement for the two positions, and then when it's time to fill the bucket, she comes back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cause confusion, that's why I was confused, I just...
So the motion that's in place is good?
Yeah, to approve the salary statement as presented.
Okay, so it doesn't need to be amended at any point? Okay, okay. Any questions, other discussion? No? Okay.
All right, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Team, Local Emergency Plan Fund 1152.
I'll make a motion to approve Local Emergency Fund 1152 appropriation totaling $36,040.
Second.
I have a motion in place from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Any discussion?
Good morning.
Morning.
This is money for the LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and we approved this budget back in our November meeting, so.
Okay. Any other questions? No? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Health Department, Health First Indiana Fund 1161.
Make a motion, we approve the Health First Indiana Fund 1161 appropriation in the amount of $1,675,600. One million, six hundred, seven, one, as presented.
Second.
All right.
Sorry, Stacy.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Discussion?
So the first number is for the request for programming that we rolled out back in September, and we gave the awardees in December, so that is through a reimbursable grant for 2025. And then the second number, the 323,246, is additional funding that we received from the state that we went and put into building in municipal, because we didn't have a line item for that, and we are finishing 1950.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Fund 9171.
Make a motion, we approve the THFGI Fund 9171 grant appropriation in the amount presented.
Second.
All right, motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Any discussion?
Just supply for Gateway to Hope.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, Fund 9330.
Make a motion, we approve opioid fund 9330 grant appropriation in the amount presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Any discussion?
Just the county share the opioid funds that are being distributed out.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes, thank you. Sheriff, Sheriff's Sale Administration Fund 4009 appropriation.
I'll make a motion to approve the Sheriff's Sale Administration Fund 4009 appropriation as presented.
Second.
This is just, oh, go ahead.
No, who's second? Okay.
Ben's going to give us $2 million.
Motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Murray. Go ahead, sorry.
No, you're all right, I was picking on Ben. This is to pay SRI for our services, it's who we use for the sheriff sales for the year.
What's this for?
The sheriff sales, the...
I heard that, but what?
It's the company's SRI that we use, so it's done online, it's not done down here anymore, the way it used to be.
What does SRI do, just from my knowledge?
They run the auctions for us online, and that software and everything, these fees are attached to that, which then we, there's a fee attached, so we recuperate that, come before you to pay for it. Otherwise, they stand down here in the county building.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. K-9 Support Fund 4012.
I'll make a motion to approve the K-9 Support Fund 4012 appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right, motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Discussion?
This is just to help pay for the vet bills and food and whatnot for our K-9s.
Any other discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. One more, Fund 9330.
I'll make a motion to approve the county share of the opioid fund 9330 grant appropriation in the map presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray.
This is a new program we'll be starting in the jail very soon, IRAX. This $100,000 will help be our half of the peers that will be paying, so it's a big step for the county, and it makes me a nervous wreck, but I understand that peers are very important to people's recovery, and I think we're going to be able to do some good things here. So that, this money will help pay those costs.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, 2018, or Fund 4818, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the Commissioner Construction FG 2018 Lit Revenue Fund 4818 appropriation as presented.
Second.
All right, motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Hi, Dave.
Good day. This is the end of the end of the Fairgrounds Bond, so this basically takes what's left of there, sweeps it out, and puts it to good use.
Okay, perfect. Any questions?
This is the Fairgrounds Bonds, right?
Yes. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Fund 8668.
I'll make a motion to approve Area 4 AACAP Fund 8668 grant appropriation as presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, second from Councilman Murray. Good morning.
Good morning. This is the annual grant that we have with Area 4 on aging to cover cost of transportation that they service to the area.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Anybody have any committee reports? No? All right, unfinished business, we have the 2025 council appointments and assignments in your packet. Jennifer put the 2025 appointments, and I believe we have all of them filled now. The turf board, Ben Murray is going to take that one. Thank you, Ben, for doing that.
Welcome.
So that one is filled. Anybody have any questions, concerns?
Do we need to take any formal action on approving Brandon Hawkins to the health board?
So it depends how you, I mean, yes, it depends how you're going to do the appointments in general. It's kind of a...
It's kind of a, the way it's structured, and this really hadn't been a problem, I think the appointment of council members to various positions is a function of the president, so it wouldn't require any action, but you also have individuals from the community that you're appointing to boards, and I think that's usually structured as the council's appointment, so the whole council would be making that motion. Long way of saying, if you approve the appointments as presented, that will carry over and have the function of appointing the health board member, as well as all the other individual members listed. Longer answer than you were looking for.
So we need a motion to approve the entire list?
I make a motion to approve the list of appointments.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, second from Councilman Murray. Any questions, discussion, concerns? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Appointments are done. I also sent around the assignments, and I don't think we need to do a formal approval of those, of the department assignments, and they have switched around, so thank you, everybody, for taking on some new departments and doing some things that didn't do before. So I appreciate that. We will get those assignments out, the updated list to everybody, as well as the departments, so they know who their council representatives are, right? Okay. All right. Any new business? Commissioners FYI. Is that you, Tom? Dave?
Dave. I was going to congratulate you all, because you had Bob Plant show up for your meeting at the first of the year, but then he has a phone ringing back there, and he leaves. So you know what? What the heck? Welcome, Ben, to the team. Congratulations to everyone. Happy New Year. Really, the only FYI we have is, if you haven't heard, Scott Walker, the Executive Director of Greater African Commerce, is found in different pastures, so he'd be taking off. We are trying to do a world national search for a replacement. I do know Jody and Tom, and I think Dennis, your dad, are currently the three trying to keep it together. So, but other than that, if you have any names, you might want to tell them. But congratulations, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Looks like we have in public comment Wabash River Fest update.
Should I sign in here?
Yes.
Yes, please.
My name's Amy Kristen Preston. I'm the watershed coordinator with the Wabash River Enhancement Corporation, a local nonprofit working to improve quality of life relating to the Wabash River. I just wanted to thank you all and the county commissioners for sponsoring and supporting Wabash River Fest over the years. You're supporting again this coming summer, and I wanted to update you on how that money's going to be used. River Fest is a local community festival celebrating our most defining natural resource, the Wabash River, so we're trying to get more local people on and around the river and having fun. So we have things like float trips, try a canoe if you've never been canoeing before, paddle boarding, 10-person Voyager canoe races, tree hikes, riverfront drawing classes, nature photography classes, and all of the booths are local government entities or nonprofits working to improve environments around the river. So it really is a celebration of our local waterway. So thank you for your continued support on that. I also, not on the topic of River Fest, I wanted to let you all know that we still have cost share funds for the cost share program that we operate. We have about 80 grand left to spend this year, so if there are any farmers interested in cover crops, or equipment modifications, or installing fences to keep cows out of streams, or nutrient management plans, they are welcome to talk to the local soil and water conservation district that can get them plugged in with our cost share program. This past year, we funded over 700 acres in cover crops and about seven equipment modifications. And if a farmer isn't sure how to modify their equipment to support low-till agriculture, there's a workshop coming up on January 2nd, sorry, 22nd, hosted by the Tepic New Soil and Water Conservation District, and that's going to be a hands-on discussion from a local farmer that did go through the equipment modification, so you can see what path he took. Do you all have any questions about River Fest funding or our cost share program?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very informative.
All right. Last thing on the agenda, next meeting, February 11th. This is our next one. And...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.